Thank you for being here, ladies and gentlemen. It's 7:00, and I will call this meeting to order. Would you please stand with me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Take the roll call. Let's see if I push the right button here.
We have a quorum with six councilors present, and Counselor Stefano requested to be excused.
Thank you. Next item is the agenda approval.
Mayor, I move we approve the agendas presented with the NXQ's Counselor Stefano.
Second it.
Have a motion and a second. Start voting, please. Kristi?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Next up is citizen comment, and I do not have any cards. So we will then move up to ceremonial items. And tonight, we have a special ceremonial item, actually two of them. We've got the oath of office for our new city clerk, Kristi Duarte. And that will be done by our present city clerk and Kristi. Thank you.
You elected to get the wireless microphone on, so we'll just talk now. Are you sure I can? Due subject to penalties of perjury, solemnly swear that you are faithfully report the duties of the position of city clerk in Alamosa, Colorado, in accordance with the laws of the United States and the state of Colorado, in the charter and order of the city. All right, we have a signature. We'll look at your end of this time.
Thank you very much. Shall we?
Just back off.
Is that all right with counsel? It's actually, it's fine? Okay, we've got Jeanette Hernandez. Please come up and, you've got three minutes. Okay? Thank you. Thank you.
I just wanted to ask, because my husband, he's been coaching my daughter since she was three years old.
You can tell us when you get to the microphone, Jeanette, please.
Hi, I just wanted to ask how come my husband wasn't eligible?
Jeanette, you've got to tell us your name and your address.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, please.
Yeah, my name is Jeanette Hernandez, and I live in Alamosa. And my question is, I just wanted to know how come my husband wasn't eligible to coach my daughter for soccer this year? He's been coaching her since she was three years old. And he has his background check here that came out clear. And my daughter has been asking how come her father can't coach her this year, and we don't have the answer for her.
Mr. Mayor, it sounds like this is issues that relate to personnel questions, and I would suggest if Ms. Hernandez has questions about that, she talk with the city manager about that, but that's not appropriate for a public forum.
About coaching soccer?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, Jeanette, this is definitely a personnel matter.
Okay.
And so we will turn this over to our city manager and have her look at it and make a determination one way or the other. So I believe that this is really a personnel issue, and our city manager and our city attorney will probably weigh in on this before counsel can do anything for you. But we appreciate you coming to counsel to let us know about this. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Next up, counsel, is a Arbor Week proclamation for 2014. And I will read this proclamation, and then, or why don't you come up and tell us a little bit about this, Marilyn? Rosear?
Can I say a couple of things?
Yes, thank you, please. I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself.
That's all right. Good evening, and it is time to plant trees again, everybody, and we welcome all of the town people to come help us. We don't have the time set, but it'll be in the newspaper upcoming soon, and I will leave some more of these handouts at the podium out here. This year, we'll be planting 27 new trees in Alamosa. Seventeen of them will be crabapple trees, south of the ball fields, the softball fields there on 285. And this was largely funded through a grant that working with Heinz Bergen from the Department of Recreation. This will be our, I believe, our sixth grant, and it's our sixth Arbor Day that we've been working on this type of thing. So we're wanting to showcase crabapple trees in town, because they do grow well here, and there are many different types now. And all of these trees, once planted, will have nameplates on them, so over the years, people can see how they're doing. Much like you'll notice the newer trees in Cole Park all have plates on them. Some were a little bit experimental and look a little winky, but some of the others are doing quite well. So the idea is to broaden the palette of trees in the San Luis Valley. The city also got 10 trees, deciduous trees, shade trees, that will be planted in the newer parts of the cemetery. We planted some a couple of years ago, and these will be some more. The older part is beautiful and shady, and it turns out the cemetery is a place where many people go, of course, visit loved ones, but also to relax, to run, you just can't take your dog. But other than that, it's a place, so it's a nice green place as we have some of these dry years. I'm happy it's raining right now. I will be sending out, as soon as I know the times, we hope that we'll be working with the Cub Scouts on Saturday to plant the trees at the ball field. Last year, the Cub Scouts helped us clean up all of the planting basins around the trees going into the cemetery. They helped with 50 trees out there, and we had about 50 people help. So we didn't just have Cub Scouts, we had Boy Scouts, we had their moms, we had the whole family. And I'll bring some treats. And then we'll be planting the cemetery trees, probably, say, I think, on Tuesday of the week of April 27th, it starts, so that'd be April 29th, probably have one time at noon and one at 4:30 or so, hoping that various people can come. Bring a shovel. The city crew does the hard work, because these are big trees, big three-inch caliber trees, so that they're heavy, so we get a lot of help from them, but we backfill and learn about how to plant them. And Heinz mentioned that all the trees came in today, so they're here. I'm very excited about that. So I really appreciated working with the city and working to have our town get green and work on a canopy. So this will be the sixth time I've done this. I'm kind of like, whoa. So anyway, it's fun to be here, though.
Well, thank you so much, Marilyn. Any comments from counsel?
Yeah, I would just like to thank you, Marilyn, and the tree board, of course. Heinz and his crew always do a good job on Arbor Day and going after those grants. You do a lot of the work, and Heinz does a lot of the work, and that's very commendable. Thank you for doing it.
Good teamwork.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, with that, I will go ahead and read this proclamation for Arbor Week 2014. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and planting more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Week is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees in Alamosa increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are renewable resource, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and renewal, and whereas Alamosa has been recognized as a Tree City USA for the 24th year and twice a recipient of the Growth Award by the National Arbor Foundation, and has a strong desire to continue its tree planting and maintenance ways, therefore, I, Joseph P. Lucero, and the city council of the city of Alamosa do hereby proclaim April 27th to May 3rd, 2014, Arbor Week in the city of Alamosa, and I recommend all citizens to celebrate Arbor Week and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And I urge all citizens to plant and maintain trees, to gladden the heart, and promote the well-being of this and future generations this 16th day of April 2014. And I will ask Rusty to present this to you.
Sure. Thank you.
That's one of the fun things we do here, isn't it? It's great. Thank you, Marilyn, for all the hard work you do. Appreciate it. Next up is consent calendar A. Under consent calendar A, we will accept the planning commission's recommendation to approve expansion of permitted use by special review to a residential use in a commercial business zone, accept planning commission's recommendation to approve outdoor sales in a commercial business zone, receive March 2014 expenditure report, approve minutes of regular meeting April 2, 2014, approve minutes of special meeting March 31, 2014, and receive March 2014 monthly report. Are there any questions or comments?
If not, Mayor, I own many, the motion we prove consent calendar A is presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Start voting, please. Kristi?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. Next on, we'll move on to regular business, business brought forth by city staff, Public Works. Dawn or Pat, help us through this, please. Thank you, Pat.
Thank you, counsel. This is a fairly straightforward request. It's a lot line vacation consolidation and adjustment plat, which is a fancy name for a plat that turns four lots into one. It's normally a land status change that sees final action at the planning commission level. This one is a little bit different in that it involves the dedication of some public utility easements that are designed to protect existing improvements and infrastructure, and also to allow us to better serve the property when it's developed. So this is, like I said, it's something that's normally handled at the planning commission level, but it's here before you, so that you can accept the dedications on the plat.
Thank you, Pat. And with that, I will open the public hearing on the final plat, Duran Real Estate LLC, vacation consolidation and lot line adjustment. And is there anyone here to speak in favor of this resolution number 5, 2014? Jerry, thank you for denouncing yourself.
Jerry Smith, 518 Bell Avenue, Alamos, Colorado. And we would like the counsel to approve our suggestion. I believe it's the right thing. We're just trying to consolidate some land. Any questions?
Any questions for Jerry, counsel? No?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak either in favor or against resolution number 5, 2014? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it to counsel for action or discussion.
If there's no questions, I move that we approve the final plat of Duran Real Estate LLC as per planning commission's recommendation, resolution number 5, 2014.
Second it.
I have a motion and a second. Start voting, counsel. Kristi?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. Next up is to discuss and direct staff regarding Monroe Street. This obviously is another Public Works. Or Heather, are you going to lead this discussion, or is Eric going to do it?
I'll do that. I'm the one who wrote up the staff report. Counsel, as you will recall, in last year, in July, actually, it wasn't last year, it was July of 2012.
July 18th of 2012.
July 18th of 2012, counsel approved a resolution and an ordinance dealing with rezoning of property that was being developed at what's called the Patterson subdivision on Monroe Street. And it looks like we didn't get a copy, oh, Heather has a copy of the plat pulled up. I don't think there's one in the packet, but this was the replat and rezoning that was approved in July of 2012 with ordinance number seven and with resolution number 23. What was discussed at the meeting at which this was approved was a requirement that the developer be responsible for two things. One was in the area where you see the proposed apartment units, that there be an access onto Monroe Street from that apartment unit complex area. And that was number one. Number two, that the developer be responsible for the cost of paving the east half of Monroe Street, which is the half that's adjacent to the Patterson subdivision where the apartment complexes are located. And that was the condition of the ordinance that was passed that allowed the rezoning. So that left things, I guess, well, in hindsight, left things a little unclear, because what happened was the developer, Mike Patterson, developed two out of the planned four apartment units that you see. And there was no requirement placed upon him for posting of a performance bond or otherwise ensuring that the cost of half of Monroe Street would be developed. And I should back up and indicate that the planning commission's recommendation was different from what counsel did. So when this came to counsel, the planning commission had recommended just approving the replat and making clear that the owner, who at the time was Larry Wilcox, so the owner of both the land that was being rezoned and replatted and of all the surrounding land that you see there is Larry Wilcox, planning commission's recommendation was that it be clear that the owner is responsible for the development of Monroe Street. When counsel considered it, counsel said, okay, we'll approve the rezoning, but there has to be a condition that the developer is responsible for half of Monroe Street. Where that leaves us now is, obviously, no one's going to build half of a street. That was done once, and swore over his dead body that would never be done again, and it doesn't make any sense. So the way that you can ensure responsibility for building half the street is to require a performance bond. The horse is a little bit out of the barn in the sense that two out of the four units have been built, but the horse is not out of the barn at all in the sense that Monroe Street will not be built until there is development of the surrounding property on the other side of Monroe Street. That's the trigger that would require the building of the street, and that hasn't happened. So you have two ways, as set forth in the staff report, that you can address this issue. And essentially...
Excuse me, Eric, before you continue and give us a recommendation, can I try to maybe bring back a little history on how this process started?
Sure.
And I've got, I went through and I did a little research, and I got the minutes on that day, which was July the 18th. And the way the minutes read is that counsel did not approve it, counsel tabled it and sent it back to the planning commission. That's what I've got right here.
What I'm looking at with those minutes is that there was a motion and a second, but then that it failed. That motion failed. And then the next was a motion to approve it, and then that carried unanimously.
In the discussion itself, and it went back forth to you twice, because we were trying to get a clear direction of what was going on out there, Mr. Patterson, the way he was proposing on setting those buildings there were side by side, which would, he wasn't even going to even attempt to develop Monroe. And the way he was setting those buildings up is he was going to feed right into West Eighth, right into, there were some resident people here that were here that night, and they were complaining about that. Well, what happened was he went back, and all he did was he flip-flopped the one that he was going to do, he flip-flopped it and left it, and still didn't continue. And in the minutes itself, it talks about the city manager saying that he is supposed to be doing the street net. He is the developer. You know, and I didn't bring the other part where Nathan tells, says that he is the developer and he is responsible for Monroe Street. You know, and I don't, the point I'm trying to make here is, we've had several situations, okay? We had another situation on Foster where we made an individual put up an $85,000 bond. And then we went up the street on Foster where another developer developed eight buildings, eight houses, and we never, we never even attempted to do the same thing to him. So I think what we need to do is, we've got to find a way how to treat everybody. We have policy for this. We got to treat everybody equal across the board, and I don't think we're doing that. Eric, and the policy states that the developer, in this case, Mr. Patterson is the developer, he bought the property, he developed it. He is responsible for putting in that street, either half or whatever, or posting something to that, so that it does get done, like what we did with the other individual over on Foster. So, you know, that's where I'm confused, and I didn't see, I only got the first part of it, and I don't, I didn't see Heather where it was, even though it was defeated, there was clear direction on how we wanted to proceed with this.
Well, when I review the minutes, I wasn't there at the meeting. So what I have to rely on is what the final vote is from counsel, because I think, as you know, there can be a lot of different opinions that are expressed during the discussion, and it's the final vote that gives a direction to staff. And so when I read that it was, a motion was made by Counselor Grego and seconded by Counselor Johnson to table the resolution 23, 2012, and send it back to the planning commission. The vote was ayes to, Grego and Johnson, nays five, Tuggle, Galipski, Romero, Lucero, and Rogers. So the motion failed. And then the next motion following that was to approve the resolution, which then carried unanimously. I think what created some of this confusion is that we had staff in P and Z feel that the property owner, which was Wilcox, was responsible for it. Counsel felt differently and voted so on the following agenda item and said the developer was. And essentially, what should have happened is some sort of agreement, because normally it occurs through the condition of the subdivision improvement plan. But that's not what was before counsel. It was voted on during the zoning part of it. So I think just some of the different direction and how it was voted on created some confusion. And then unfortunately, from a staff perspective, we didn't follow up appropriately. We should have required a performance bond before the developer began creating his apartments. But I believe what Eric was getting to was, we know we need to hold someone responsible. What we want to find out from counsel is if that's Mr. Wilcox or if that's Mr. Patterson, and what your options are in choosing that. So we definitely want to protect the future of the cost for building that half of the street. We just want to get clear direction from counsel which person we should be holding responsible.
And let me be clear that I don't think it's counsel's business to decide as between two businessmen who is responsible.
No.
That's their deal.
Exactly.
You have two ways to approach this. You can approach this by making clear to Mr. Patterson, who is the developer, and I think actually does now own that subdivision property, that he will not receive building permits for the next two proposed units unless and until an appropriate bond is posted for half of the cost of paving Monroe between, I think it's between 8th and 10th that we're talking about. That's one approach. Or you can make clear to Wilcox that he will not receive any approval for any further development of the surrounding property until Monroe Street is paved. And it's up to Wilcox to figure out whether he's got to pay the whole thing, or Patterson is responsible for half. That's not your deal. Your deal is to make clear to the two of them that there's an issue there that they're going to need to resolve. And either approach will do that. In fact, the first approach where you would indicate to Patterson that no additional building permits will be granted until a bond for half the street is posted, there's nothing that would prohibit that from being coupled with the second one, which is also making clear to Wilcox that no development of the surrounding property is going to happen until the entire street's paved. Those are not mutually exclusive. You could do both.
Well, what happens if they decide not to even quit developing it? We're just stuck with a dirt street there? You know, that should have been, you know, because we dropped the ball, should have been, something should have been in place to make sure that that road get built some way.
Well, if it doesn't get developed, the road would never be built anyway. I mean, that, again, you don't build a half a road. So the only reason that you would build Monroe Street is if there were development there. If it doesn't develop any further than it is right now, everybody's accessing off of 8th.
I think also that there was another complication to that entire discussion in that the west, I believe the west, northwest corner of that area, there was encroachment onto Monroe by a private individual.
Still is, yeah.
And there still is. And I think that's what threw a monkey wrench into some of the discussion and kind of led us astray.
You know, that should have been, you know, 'cause we dropped the ball, should have been, something should have been in place to make sure that that, that road get built some way.
Well, if it doesn't get developed, the road would never be built anyway. I mean, that, again, you don't build a half a road. So the only reason that you would build Monroe Street is if there were development there. If it, if it doesn't develop any further than it is right now, everybody's accessing off of 8th.
I think also that there was another complication to that entire discussion in that the, the west, I believe the west, northwest corner of that area, there was encroachment onto Monroe by a private individual.
Still is.
Yeah, and there still is. And I think that's what threw a monkey wrench into some of the discussion and kinda led us astray into deciding who finally was going to be responsible, whether it was Wilcox or Mr. Patterson. And so obviously, we just never got to that, we never crossed that bridge. Somehow, we overlooked that. But at this point in time, we have four alternatives here, and you've discussed two of them, and even three of them, to direct staff to pursue both avenues to ensure that the construction costs are covered. And that would, that would be something that would be left up to staff. Does council have any different ideas?
And let me just...
Let me, Eric, let me comment on what you just said, that why we should have, why would we even build a road 'cause there's no development? Well, the development's there. He built two apartment complexes there. And we had the same argument on Foster when the gentleman that was saying that in the future, if there's no development going on there, but in the future, when it does happen, we will come back and we'll build the road. But council said, no, you will post a, some kind of a bond for X number of dollars, and we pursued it and we made him do that. Now, now you're telling me that because there's not gonna be any future development there, we shouldn't have this guy post anything or do anything? I think that's, I don't know, it's, it's wrong, I think.
Well, I'm saying you can't go back now and make him post a bond after those two buildings are up. You can tell him, you can condition any future permit on the posting of a bond, but you don't have, you can't, there was no requirement to post a bond other than as part of his development, and that didn't happen. He got a permit for those first two units without posting a bond.
So we can ask the developer to post a bond, but what Eric is saying was we have no teeth to force him. The teeth would be the denial of the building permit that he cannot continue to build until he does do that. It could be if we approach him and ask him to post the bond that he would do so, but we can't force him to do it. The teeth come with, when we can withhold the building permit.
And I wish, and I wish we could hear the conversation, 'cause the minutes don't really show exactly the discussion we had. It was a very lengthy discussion that went back and forth, and it even went to the point that one motion was denied and then the second was approved because, the second one was approved because of what was discussed there. And in that discussion, it talked about that this gentleman had to post something to make sure that that road would get built. And we dropped the ball. Sure, we dropped the ball, but I don't, I don't, I don't see how we could just allow him to do that, and then somebody else that comes to council and tries to do the same thing and force it on them. I don't think that's fair.
Well, I think this is an interesting conversation, because the reason we're bringing it before you is that we are trying to be consistent philosophically. Council was 100% correct in that they were looking out for the future to make sure that the infrastructure was going to be built by the appropriate person. Unfortunately, we didn't get the right things put into place. So your reference to Foster, it's not that there's a philosophical difference there that we did something wrong. It's that we need to go back and fix this situation and make it consistent. And so it's trying to find out from council, not whether or not we should get a performance bond, but it's who we should hold responsible for that. So I think we are trying to create some consistency here.
And I think, I think council, one of the things that we really need to consider at this point in time is that this, what we decided is really basically water under the bridge, and there's no way we can get that back. But we can certainly hold either the owner or the builder responsible for any future development on that property, basically, until a performance bond is issued or someone is named to make sure that Monroe Street is improved with curb and gutter and whatever else is needed as per our policy. So this is where we're at now. And how we deal with different individuals, I think, is really a matter of policy that needs to be upheld. Somehow or other, this fell through the cracks. This is our opportunity to make sure that it doesn't happen again and hold someone responsible, because Monroe will eventually develop as growth occurs out there. So at this point in time, we need to hold, find out who we're gonna hold responsible, and I think legal has more, and staff has more or less let us know who that should be. So we need to direct staff in the appropriate manner and move on.
Before we move on, I just want to ask you, Eric and Heather, by pursuing both avenues, will that give us leverage? And what type of leverage will we have in ensuring that this doesn't happen in the future, so we can be fair and have a level playing field? Well, the leverage really is twofold. One is no further building permits until half the cost is taken care of somehow on the one, on the one approach, and on the other approach, no development at all until the street is taken care of. That's the leverage that you've got. And when you do both approaches, which is really, I think, what I would recommend, you leave the decision, the working out of who's responsible for that up to the two people who are involved. And you don't know what their deal was, whether, whether they had worked out as between themselves how that was gonna happen. They knew. I mean, the Planning Commission said, hey, Monroe Street's gonna be developed at some point. So they knew as between the two of them that someone was gonna have to pay for that. We don't know how they dealt with that. That was, that was never a part of the, of the meeting, and that's why I say I don't think it's appropriate for you to make that determination. Let them make that determination.
Okay.
So you're covered both ways. So if the developer decides not to do the other two buildings, then the other one with Wilcox not allowing any development covers that. Whereas if that future development occurs a long time from now, you're still covered if the other person wants to do the two buildings. So it's a, it's an either/or that will, depending on what happens, provide more protection.
Okay. Thank, thank you both of you.
Rusty?
I think we covered, well, I'll probably just ask it again. The contract between those two should be very clear who's responsible for what. So...
I wouldn't lay money on that, but...
Well, the possibility is there. So us assigning it to one or the other may complicate that. So I would be in favor of, actually, there's not a option, but I guess I'm ready to make a motion if there's no more comment.
What do I go back and tell my constituents that were here that night and said, you know, and council drew it up and gave direction? What'd I go tell them right now? That we dropped the ball? What am I supposed to say? That we're in the wrong? Is that, is that the answer?
Well, I think that it's pretty clear that what council intended was that no building permits get issued until a bond for half the street get posted, gets posted. That didn't happen.
Yeah.
And I think part of the problem with that is that we, what we did was depart from the Planning Commission recommendation without having the Public Works Director here. He was not here for that meeting, and so we all floundered a little bit. That may be why this happened. But yes, I think that it's, that that was a ball drop, for sure.
And Mr. Patterson was here that night. He heard exactly what we wanted.
He was.
Yeah.
He was here.
So there's, you know, he just chose not to do it, I guess, you know, and...
Well, why would he say, hey, how come you're giving this building permit to me?
Rusty?
Just another comment, Charlie. I believe what, and I could be wrong, it's been a while. I think the citizens in your area were concerned about the entrance just on 8th Street and the traffic with the school, and that's why we required the entrance on Monroe to alleviate that traffic problem. So I think by doing the Monroe Street with that entrance the way we designed it, that solved the problem for the neighborhood. So I think what we're doing now, I think we're still doing what we promised the neighborhood we would do, but we did drop the ball.
That entrance is there, by the way. So the space for the entrance onto Monroe is there when Monroe is created or developed.
Counselor, if I remember correctly as well, Counselor Tuggle and myself were adamant about ingress and egress onto Monroe. And I'm pretty sure some of you remember that discussion. And so I know that that in itself was something that also complicated manners in that there was not enough room for ingress, egress between the two proposed buildings. And so we said, well, take it back to the drawing board, and when you, and then when you come back, make sure you have ingress and egress. However, that never happened. Next thing we know, both buildings are up. So this is our opportunity to clean it up and not be so proud of ourselves, but move on and make sure that this doesn't happen again. So if that is all the discussion...
I've got a comment, I guess.
Thank you.
I think that makes it clear that in future, we have a policy that is consistent for everyone, and I hope that in the future, staff reminds us of this policy, and we can lay it down uniformly, and I think that's the way to go. So thank you.
Okay. One more question. If we approached either party to ask them just voluntarily do a performance bond, what party do you believe we should ask?
I guess, I, again, I really resist having council make a determination as between the two parties who should do it. Patterson was the one who was there, however, and so he clearly has firsthand knowledge of that discussion that happened. And if you were going to approach somebody voluntarily, I think I would start by approaching him. My recommendation, however, is for alternative three to approve or to pursue, I'm sorry, both avenues of ensuring that construction gets done, because like I say, they are not mutually exclusive. And then as between the two parties, they figure it out amongst themselves. In fact, if their, if their deal was that Patterson would be responsible, I would think the way they would work that out would be that Patterson would agree pursuant to his agreement with Wilcox to post that bond. That's the only way that Wilcox knows, that when he develops in the future, Patterson's half is taken care of, if indeed that was their, their deal.
Thank you, Eric.
Okay. So with that, I will move that we select alternative three, direct staff to pursue both avenues to ensure construction costs are covered.
I second.
I have motion and second. Start voting, council. Christie?
The motion carries five to one with Counselor Grego, no.
Thank you, council. Next up, our committee reports. Anyone have a committee report? Jan?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I attended the Alamos Board of Education meeting, and at this meeting, they acknowledged the boys and girls basketball teams for their playoff runs this season. Also from the school district, they hired Greg Kors as the principal at Ortega Middle School. Carrie Zimmerman was hired as the assistant superintendent. And just a side note there, she's my principal at Center. So it's a big loss for us, but a huge gain for this community. They talked about doing some baseball field improvements for the baseball squad, and also improvements for the gymnastic program. I also attended the Adams State Governing Bodies Meeting. They were giving money to different clubs for conferences, trips, events, et cetera, for the rest of the year and into the summer. And they're just getting their budget ready for the next school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. Greg?
Yes. Golf board report. It's been an exciting new year at the Cattails Golf Course. As you know, it's been shut down for several weeks now, but as of tonight, it's reopened. The membership meeting is tonight in the new restaurant. This is the first event in the new restaurant after reopening. The new manager is Jared Roberts. The pro shop has been open for several weeks now. It has new merchandise, fresh, fresh new styles with the Cattails logo. The HVAC is up and working after its completion. They put up the finishing touches today on the vent work. So that's ready to go. The grounds crew is busy working, installing the culverts where some of the bridges were, replacing the old rickety bridges with culverts now. The culverts were donated by Rocky Southway. I need to mention that the board has spent a lot of time working at the new restaurant, getting the new LEC up and running. It's been busy three weeks from when they found out that they needed to get a new LEC, and they've worked very hard in getting that going. So I'd like to thank everyone on the golf board and Jared Roberts himself. They purchased the equipment and inventory from Ron Martinez, the previous owner, and hired Jared Roberts as a manager. The new restaurant name is Cattails Bar and Grill. It's open to the public this Friday. We'll start a soft opening, I believe. They have a liquor license already. They obtained it as a transfer from Ronnie Martinez. They've done a lot of cleaning, a lot of painting. It really looks nice. I encourage everyone to go out there and look over the new restaurant. The menu is going to be, start out low-key in order to have a quick opening, and then they'll grow from there with a few specials in the evening. And, oh, upon reopening, they found a problem with the walk-in freezer. They had to replace the compressor, and I guess that will be in in about three weeks. So it's still touch and go, but it's off to a start, so very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Charlie?
I was gonna give a recreation advisory board meeting, but we're having a tough time getting a quorum. And on the 24th, I think Heinz is gonna try it again, but I won't be here, so Rusty will probably show up, show up for that one.
Thank you, Charlie. Rusty?
Marketing and Tourism Board, we had a meeting last Tuesday night. It was their, they just finished their funding cycle, so it was fairly quick and easy meeting. Probably the biggest topic we discussed, there was some discussion on the train. Nothing set right now. They're discussing doing something a little different with the train, trying to market it or something like that. But that discussion is forthcoming, and I'll keep you in the loop when it comes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have their old minutes and their financials, if anybody's interested in looking at that.
Thank you, Rusty. We'll move on to staff announcements. Heather?
As Heinz is working his way up, I do have a few comments. We staff met with Rob Alahoe and a school board member to discuss our design of the 8th Street project, and then also to see if we could encourage them to look at adding another loop for the drop-off off of 8th Street to help with some of the parking issues, the congestion they already face in that area with some of the safety concerns, but then also the congestion they have coming off of 10th Street as well. The plan is for us to do a presentation at one of their upcoming board meetings at a, maybe a work session. So we will be attending that. We'll get information to City Council on when that is. And hopefully, we can take advantage of the city doing a street project to maybe help the school district see some savings on addressing some of the issues they've had for drop-off and pickup in that area. I've been contacted by the individuals with the Healthy Living Park. We have them scheduled for a work session before City Council on April 30th, or actually, May 7th. May 7th is when they were going to do a work session. They have also been having conversations with the county commissioners, and a request that they've asked is if we could invite the county commissioners to that work session and have it be somewhat of a joint work session, and they could do the presentation one time, and it would allow for questions from both groups. I did clarify to make sure that nothing has changed in regards to what they hope to get out of that work session. It's still purely informational. They want everyone just to understand what the plan is for the project and to have an opportunity to ask questions. They don't anticipate asking for any financial or any other type of assistance at that point in time. If we do make it a joint session, which would be fine, I would recommend probably instead of starting it at six o'clock... recommend probably instead of starting it at six o'clock, starting it at 5:30. But I just wanted to check with council before I told them that that would be okay and make sure you're comfortable with that. Is there any concerns?
Counsel, 5:30?
That's good.
May the 7th?
May 7th at 5:30. And then as a reminder, on April 30th is when we are bringing back a more final design for the Eighth Street development, for that project. As you know, we've had several meetings with the neighborhood due to the constraints of some encroachment and the design of the street and what's more of a priority in regards to other parts. And so that work session on April 30th is for council to see the more of a finished product following that public input. Hines, I'll go ahead and let you talk, and then I have an item after you.
Before Hines talks, can I ask you a question? You sent us an email on the construction that's going on on 285.
Yes.
And is that going to affect that, we're trying to straighten out West Eighth and Eighth Street. Are we going to deal with that then, or how is that going to work?
Well, I'll have Pat answer that question. So we'll let Hines go, and then Pat will answer the question.
Thank you.
Okay. In a holding pattern here. All right. Okay, just to summarize some of the upcoming events in the community. Tomorrow at the Rec Center from 9:00 to 10:00 at the main gym, we're going to have the Broncos Salute to the Fans Tour. They'll be just here for an hour, so it's a quickie. They're going from here to Montavista, then to Pogosa Springs, and Durango on one day. So that's why the short time period. Also, just to let you know, the British Soccer Camp, we're bringing that back again for the first week in June, from the 2nd to 6th. Part of the registration fee, you get, the children get a free ball and t-shirt. And if you do an online registration 45 days before the start of it, you get a free jersey, and that happens to be the 18th. On, let's see, April 30th, we've got Hershey Track Meet at the new Elmo's High School Stadium. And over this coming weekend, Easter weekend, we've got three Easter egg hunts going on in the parks. We've got, on Saturday, we've got one in Sunset Ball Field at noon. The American Legion has theirs at Boyd Park on Sunday at 1:00, and then we have another one in Cole Park at 2:00. So kids can get a lot of eggs on Saturday and Sunday. Dreamsicles, Easter egg hunt, Angelicas. Okay, boom, boom, boom. And then just kind of report on the Dog Park Forum that we had last week. On the 9th, we had about 20 or 30 people, citizens, come in, and we received some real good inputs and comments from them. Right now, the staff has consolidated that information and kind of weighing the pros and cons of everything that was discussed at the meeting. Our next plan of action would be to go to the Rec Board to get their input at the next available meeting, which hopefully will be the 24th. After that, we're looking at another public forum to review those inputs and then kind of narrow down our options and then kind of go over the costs of those options. Finally, then, once that's, we got our final input from the public on that, we go back to the Rec Board to establish a recommendation to City Council. And then from City Council, we're looking at approving both the park location and the name, and also when to fund the project. It's going to be a capital fund. It's going to be more than $5,000. Right now, it's on the unfunded capital list, so it's just a matter of where the priority lies with City Council. That's it.
Thank you, Hines. Pat?
Originally, it was our intent to begin our improvements on West Eighth Street at the intersection with 285 and coordinate that construction with CDOT. It rapidly became expensive and time-consuming, trying to work with CDOT and work with their consulting engineers, trying to get that done. So we shifted the project to the west end of West Eighth Street, and we'll work east, and we'll approach them about the intersection work we're going to do in a couple of years when we get to the highway. We just, it became difficult, so we flip-flopped the project. Heather asked me to give you a little update on the rest of our street projects. We plan on rebuilding Clark Street from Maroon to Craft. We're doing some additional improvements to the intersection with Maroon, and we'll include, it's our plan to include a right turn lane onto Craft from eastbound Clark. We, she gave you an update on West Eighth Street. We will include the design and construction of the entry into the drop-off loop that we're proposing, so we can get that built. Even if we don't end up building that new drop-off loop this year, we'll have it set up to just come into it and build it real quick. Richardson, I believe you asked about Richardson. It was our intent to turn that into a two-way street and put a one-way out, a right-hand out on the highway. That is also hung up with CDOT right now. Hopefully, we'll get to it late in the summer, but I can't promise anything.
Thank you, Pat. Any questions with Pat?
I do. Do you have at all an update on Walker Road?
Walker Road, we have a 95% design completed, and we're reviewing that right now.
Thank you, Pat. Heather?
One other item I wanted to present from a staff perspective is we've been working closely with Randy Wright in regards to the Pink Elephant, and he's had recent conversations with the property owner of Sick and Twisted. And unfortunately, because of the coverage that we've received as far as the efforts that we want to put towards that project, the property owner has now increased his price again back up to $350,000 as far as an asking price for a property that's been appraised at $85,000. It is unfortunate. It's obviously a location that has an impact on the project, but it's not something that we would even entertain a price that high. During the discussions that Mr. Wright has had with the property owner, he has shared with him that the city's very interested in wanting to make this a successful project, and that we would be exploring different options and having those discussions in a very frank manner. He has requested to have a meeting with myself and Charlie in order to talk about some of that, but we did want to make sure staff's aware of it and that we're looking at all the different options to make the project successful.
What are the options, Heather?
Well, we can...
Can you discuss them, or would you rather not?
We can essentially reduce the project by half and not tear down that building. It would add some cost to the construction because we would need to shore up the building. There is two walls, so it does have its own separate wall, but structurally, it probably would need to be shored up. That's not the best option, but that is one of the options. The other option is to try to continue to negotiate with the property owner and hope we could reach a reasonable price. And the third option would be to explore condemnation. We've looked into the legal aspects of that, of what we can do and not do, especially with some recent law that was passed at the state level. We would need to make sure to have that use be for a public use, but there's not clear direction on how long that would need to be. So if we were to use a condemnation process, we would need to keep that property with the city and use it for a public use for what we feel would be a justifiable period of time to meet what the intent is with the state law. So those are discussions we would still need to work on. Essentially, when you get into the condemnation process, it's not necessarily a fun process, and you don't like using the heavy arm of government when it comes to private business either, but it is a significant part of the project, and it's something that we probably at least need to explore and not make any determination if we pursue it or not.
Thank you, Heather. Another question I had for you is if the entities decide, and I'm sure this is more than one entity, or would the city have the sole responsibility of condemnation? Who would spearhead that part of that? And what would it cost the entity for that? What would the cost be for condemnation?
I think the city is the entity that would pursue condemnation, and costs of condemnation are fair market value for the property that you're condemning. And then there's also the, of course, attendant legal costs and appraisal costs and the process costs of getting there. But condemnation involves paying fair market value for what's condemned.
Thank you.
And knowing Mr. Muniz, I think we don't have to go to that route, condemnation. I think we just need to sit down with him and visit and work this out. And I don't know how Randy's handled it, you know, but whatever you want to sit down with him. I'll be gone next week, but the following week, if you want to, just let me know and arrange something, and we'll visit with him.
My impression, he's kind of in and out of town. And so what I can do is check your schedule, and we can let Randy know sometimes we're available, and we can coordinate or coordinate directly with the property owner ourselves.
Good. Thank you.
Charlie, we thank you for getting involved with that. Rusty?
Timeframe on condemnation and the other legal part, you need to check on how long we have to keep it public, correct?
Well, we have a public purpose that we would have to be pursuing with condemnation, and that doesn't mean that it's public purpose, that same purpose forever.
Sure.
But certainly, the purpose has to be a legitimate purpose that we're pursuing and that we use it for.
And timeframe, once we start dealing with, is there...
Timeframe from starting a condemnation process to having the property condemned?
Correct.
You're probably talking about a year, I would think.
Well, I agree with Charlie. I don't think it's anything we really want to pursue, but if this guy is wanting more than four times the appraised value, and he's hanging up a big project for us, I think if it's going to be a year-long project, I think we need to start that avenue, or at least start discussing that avenue, so that we're not six months from now starting the process if we can't come to an agreement with that gentleman.
Thank you, Rusty. Greg?
Yeah, I think this project has been idle for about two years now. We need to get it moving again. I don't think we want to rule anything out at this point. We just need to get it moving in the right direction. I'd hate to see another year slip by, but it's very important to the city and to council to get this project going. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Ty?
Yeah, I'm just curious. I wanted to find out how long has this been going on? And if it's been going on two years, I'm wondering why we're so far apart, $85,000 to $350,000. And have we been having consistent talks with this individual, and do we plan on stepping up the talks a little bit more?
The project is, the lead on the project has been Mr. Wright, and he's been the one, I believe, having most of the discussions with the property owner. I'm not sure if my predecessor was involved in those discussions or not. The impression I've been given is that at the beginning, some of the conversations were above $400,000. Then he came down some, and then I think we had him much lower, maybe than $350,000. And then the most recent has been going back up to the $350,000. I can't attest to the tone of those conversations, what's been covered. They seem to have been professional discussions, the way it's been explained to me. I can't really explain the fluctuation, the prices to that degree. I mean, it's pretty extreme.
Okay. And the $85,000, is that current market value that we've gotten from appraisals reports?
I believe so, but I would want to look into that and double-check. But that's what was told to me, is that's the appraised value.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you, staff. Are there any other staff announcements? Seeing none, we'll move on to council comment. Yon?
Yeah, I'd like to give a big thank you to Hines and Andy Rice and Jessica Jolly and all that staff for doing the Dog Park meeting last week. It was awesome. There was a lot of community involvement. I think this could be a great project, and right on.
Thank you, Yon. Charlie?
About two months ago, we traveled up to Golden to give a presentation to DOLA for a grant for the airport in the amount of a million dollars. And we got word from DOLA that we have gotten that full grant. So we're going to go ahead and pursue the airport.
Thank you, Charlie. Does that mean we're going to have a party?
Well, I don't know about that, but we will. It will continue as scheduled.
Thank you, Charlie. Thank you very much for being on that board. Sure means a lot to all of us. Greg?
I'd like to recognize Judy Egbert for, as this is her last meeting, and thank her for all her service to the city. I wasn't here for her party last week, but she will be missed. So thank you very much, and good luck.
Thank you, Greg. Ty?
I also attended the Dog Park Forum last week, and I would like to thank Hines and his staff for being so thoroughly prepared for that event. And I also would like to thank the citizens for coming out in huge numbers to support the creation of a potential dog park in the community. It was very well received, and I want to thank you and your staff for doing that. Good job.
Thank you, Ty. And I would also like to thank Judy again for her many years of service. You will be missed, Judy. And Christie, we are so happy to have you here. Welcome. And wow, changes are just occurring all over the place. And all right. And if there's nothing else, I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you.